Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 25th, 2018 Select Board meeting. I'll call this meeting to order at this time. Consent agenda. And we have minutes, March 28th, 2018. The warrants we have that are being signed now, which are the Water Department. Water and Sewer. Sign a FLAP grant MOA, agreement with Midbridge Road. And BVPC, CPC Agreement Amendment Number Two.
I've got one question just on that FLAP grant. I don't know if now's the time or later.
Yeah, it's the time.
Sure.
Was that something that was brought before the board previously? You guys discussed. And is that $45,000 from the town in the budget for this year?
Yeah, it was Chapter 90.
Yeah, we can use Chapter 90. We utilize Chapter 90.
Okay, so it's already planned and all that kind of stuff.
Well, we have a way to start getting planning a project going. I'm not sure if we're going to land yet on our behalf. We're going to do some of the work, possibly the COVID work as part of the match. So we don't have to dig into the Chapter 90.
Oh, so it might be some working kind instead of financial?
Yes, yes. Match, it's a 20% match. So I can supply labor and materials or Chapter 90, however it works out.
Okay.
I think it's been two years now we applied this and it's finally getting rolling.
Okay.
I think this is the fourth year.
Fourth year?
We applied, yeah.
I think it was...
Mike Klamaski brought it.
Yeah.
I applied last year at this time.
He applied, he applied four years first round, didn't get it. He applied the second round and then we got it for $226,000. For paving a portion of Midbridge Road and say, oh, the wildlife, the sanctuary.
Not paving. That was a big discussion.
Chip seal.
Chip seal, sorry.
Comes in 2027 with our match.
No, that was a big discussion four years ago. Paving or chip seal.
And just so you know, we may have an opportunity to do the existing paving ends for future grants. I don't even talk in the federal highway administration on that, so.
And motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. And further discussion? All of us in case?
Aye.
Aye. We'll go to call the comments. Is there anybody here this evening who will call the comments?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Jessica Kim, 35 West Street. I just wanted to speak about the Police Department's Facebook post over the weekend. As many of you know, and as the Gazette reported yesterday, there was a post over the weekend on the Hadley Police Department page, which expressed an idea which is based in racism, that caring about racial bias means not caring about police lives. The post was removed quickly, and Chief Mason apologized for the error. It was intended for a personal page and not the Police Department page. I'm concerned that a member of the police is sharing racist memes online. I'm concerned that members of our community may live in danger due to the effect that implicit bias can have in policing. To his credit as a leader, Chief Mason has offered to hold a dialogue with concerned citizens such as myself. And at that meeting, I'll bring up these concerns and others. I also urge the Select Board to continue this conversation. I wonder if our recently expanded Police Department needs more funding for training. I understand from the newspaper article that there's annual bias training, and if that is a one-day bias training, that's insufficient. I've had concerns for a long time about the purpose of the Hadley Police Department Facebook page. There are times when it is informational about community events, but there's also times when car accident photographs are posted, it seems to me like public shaming. And there's an open comment thread that's not moderated, and I'm not sure that that serves a productive purpose for our community. I feel that what happened this weekend crossed an obvious line, and I hope that the Select Board takes it seriously and continues to have conversations with the Police Department about this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Jessica. My only comment is, is that, of course, we're not allowed to discuss any personnel matters in open session without anything being here. So we duly take note of what you've said. Again, that meeting is open to anyone that has any issues or would like to speak to it. I think we're meeting on Monday at 5:15 at the Public Safety Complex.
And anybody that would like to come is more than invited. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further comments?
Yeah, I want to bring to the board's attention two things. One, I received the minutes from the Municipal Senior Center Committee. In those minutes, they put all the highlights in it. No motions, no seconds, no opening, no closing. I feel they're in violation of the open meeting law. What transpired there is illegal. There were no votes taken. So I know I got previous minutes, the opening, the closing, the motion, the vote, and there's no attendance there. So it's just a guessing game. I think you need to send them a message to redo their minutes in detail, because they are public records, they want to be transparent, but they don't want to say who voted for anything or who voted against anything. All right, that's one thing. And secondly, I received an email that was sent from Salkman Stanley, and that's what it said. I just wanted to drop you a quick note, because I've heard that Don Nitschowski probably spelled wrong, purchased tickets to the COA wine tasting event tonight. I have also heard that he has been visiting the Senior Center frequently to talk to Suzanne. And it is border harassment, if not crossed that line. I will be attending that event that evening, and well, I hope, and everything goes smoothly.
John, we can't get into it.
If there is any issues, I tell you, ask the leader.
We cannot have detrimental things saying, you can't bring somebody else's name into an email, a quote-unquote.
But he can make violate my civil rights, that's fine for a selectman.
He's not violating his rights.
Well, what did you do with Donald Pitt? When he slashed his badge? You brought cases to everywhere.
He did not flash a badge.
He had no authority doing that.
He was just making...
Yeah, he was just, did you acquaint him as the drunk officer of the town? No.
He's a Select Board member.
I'm going to file this as a complaint with the State Ethics Commission.
That's enough.
No, that's not enough.
It is enough.
Because you can't have that kind of behavior.
Do what you need to do.
You said that yourself.
This is not the venue.
Yeah.
To do that act.
Right, only when you want to hear.
You have a problem, do what you need to do.
I had a problem, and this is where you have your open meeting, but like I said before, talking to you about something is useless.
It's a public comment.
I made a public comment, you don't want to hear it.
So we'll duly note it.
Right.
Ambulance service, we'll do the town administrative report later.
Sure.
Ambulance service, thank you for coming. I have my committee here this evening, thank you.
Technically a work group.
Work group, I know.
Technically a work group.
But that's okay.
Not a formal committee, signed by the... Good evening, I'm Barbara O'Connor, resident obviously of Town of Hadley. I know there's some new members of the board that I have not met, but it's nice to see you here, thank you for serving. With me tonight are also some members of the work group, and Hank Barstow, Amy Biden, and George Moriarty. Chief Spankname was not here tonight, he was also on the work group. Steve Barstow's on the work group. And two members of the Select Board, Joyce and Molly, were also on the...
Our deputy chief is representing.
Representing?
Representing tonight.
So I want to, first I'll say, we had a great work group. I think people worked very well together, very respectful. We've been meeting for over a year, listened to a lot of information, and covered, I think, a lot of ground in that time period. We began our work with the purpose of crafting an RFP and sending out an RFP for ambulance service for the Town of Hadley. We did that, we issued an RFP. As you know, the RFP came back with one respondent. We reviewed that work, we actually met with that company, that company's Action EMS, they did a, submitted a very comprehensive proposal and then presented a very comprehensive proposal. Although having only one proposal, we stepped back a little bit, we had some additional meetings with the Town of Amherst. And I should say, and I've said this in my letter to you all, we also met prior to crafting the RFP with many municipalities and some private vendors too, about, you know, different services and different models of services. And so we covered all that ground, and then spent the latter part of our meetings really discussing what's in the best interest of Hadley in terms of the actual service. In our last meeting, we voted, although my letter says unanimously, I realized that Steve Barstow was not at that meeting, so with the exception of Steve Barstow, everybody present, it was a unanimous vote to move forward with recommending to you Action Ambulance. We made that decision, obviously not lightly. We felt very passionately about the level of service that we have gotten from Amherst. They are incredibly professional and have done a tremendous job for the Town of Hadley for a number of years. That said, the group could not help but be concerned about what we've seen in the newspaper about the stress on Amherst. And frankly, I think it's fair to say, we felt very passionately that the Town of Hadley residents deserve the best possible response time, the best possible service. And with Amherst constraints right now, we really felt that Action presents us with a better option. It gives us a full-time ambulance in the town, 24/7, 365, housed in the Hadley Fire Station. And they are very committed to being involved in our community, very committed to actually helping Hadley if Hadley so chooses to transition eventually to its own service. We were extremely impressed with the company and their presentation. So I want to pause there and look to my fellow committee members, I mean, sorry, work group members, to see if I missed anything, if anybody wants to add anything that I may have left out.
George, cover. George is itching there.
No, I just don't know, I mean...
We can see it.
I'm not itching, I just didn't know if I should bring it up. Now, I think Action EMS, absolutely, RFP was very detailed. In some aspects, I think almost too detailed. They truly, I think everything we asked for, they agreed to. I really don't think they didn't agree to anything. If it was, it was very small and minor. The other thing, I mean, I'm a taxpayer as well, and it's a lot more money than what we were paying, it's a lot more money than what Amherst said they would do for this year or next year. In a two-year contract, you know, it's $105,000 or $104,000 more. I think that if the town is going to seriously start bridging, that they want to start their own EMS. I personally think that it's probably not the best thing to do. I think there's too many unknown costs. The committee did not look at any budget submitted by the fire chief or the town regarding what an ambulance service would cost. But by saying that, I also want to say that the best, if the town is going to really within two years to say, we're going to get into the ambulance service, really our only way of starting that program, because there's really no, nobody that works for the Town of Hadley's ever started an ambulance service from scratch. I'm not sure about if you were involved in one. With saying that, there's a lot of pitfalls with everything. I think there's a lot of costs, you're going to need nine full-time EMTs, there's benefits, everything. So we looked at no cost at that. So if the town is seriously going to go into the EMS business, Action EMS by far is going to help the fire department bridge that, they've said that, they will work with us. If the town decides in a year or two years, they get their ambulance, they start running maybe the second call, you know, the first call would be them, so that the town gets the experience, able to get the licenses that they need. Spending that $105,000 is money well spent, in my part. If the town doesn't think that they're going to be spending, you know, upwards of probably a couple hundred to $500,000 in startup costs, ambulances, all that stuff, then I think we should be looking at Amherst. That's my opinion. Some of the, some of the stuff that Amherst did give us, you know, delays, time delays and response times, there are some, absolutely. And I just think that some of them weren't explained well. Some of them, they said, well, it's weather. Well, we never checked whether it was weather or not. Some of them, the police, because of security reasons, hold them there. Well, all we get is, it was a 15-minute response time, and, you know, we wouldn't think that it was that. So we didn't really get into their numbers. Yes, they're overworked, they don't always have an ambulance for us, but I think it comes down to, if the town is seriously going to get into EMS services relatively quick, a year or two, then Action is probably the only way we should look at it. If we're not, then I think the Select Board should look at what, you know, the other options.
Some sort of long-term contract of the service.
Somebody, yeah, I mean, it's...
The two big issues I had throughout this whole thing was the cost of implementing this, which the chief had came up with $1.6 million to start it, and the level of service, paramedic or an ALS ambulance. And those are two big issues that we have had right now.
Yeah, I mean, we kicked those questions around too, and our scope was not to develop a budget or review a budget or prepare for the town to have its own fire department. It was part of the discussion, quite frankly, because the philosophy and the decision of the board, you know, that, they kind of go hand in hand. Action Ambulance is in a number of municipalities who have no interest in having their own fire department run their service. And, you know, the closest one is the city of Hoyoke, and, you know, by all accounts and references, the service there is held in high regard. The rest of them, I think, are in the East Coast part of the state. So, you know, it's interesting, when I was on the board 10 years ago, I was on the ambulance group at that time. And change takes time, but I remember being very concerned as a Select Board member, very much about the fire department, the level of service, and ultimately, the safety of our residents because of that. And we've done, the town has changed tremendously in that 10 years in terms of the growth in the fire department and the Police Department as well. And George is right, it's not, you know, we don't recommend this decision lightly because it is more cost, right? And everybody sitting here is a taxpayer in the Town of Amherst. You know, as someone who's retired and on a fixed income, you know, my taxes going up is not something I want to see happen. But at the end of the day, the money is, I think, going to be well spent in a significantly reduced response time.
Got a couple of questions for the work group and the deputy chief. So Action, will it always be ALS staffs with paramedics, and will it be all paramedics on board, or are they going to have one paramedic and a basic?
Yeah, I have to look at the, do you remember, Joyce?
I believe it's going to be two paramedics.
Yeah.
And then, I guess the other question for the chief is, if we're going to be housing their ambulance at the Public Safety Complex, we've heard over the years at various times that we're running out of room at the Public Safety Complex to store equipment, we don't have the room to put the equipment that we have now. So where are we coming up with the space to house an ambulance that we don't even own versus equipment that we do own?
So right now, we do have a spot if there isn't, the ambulance, if you guys do vote on Action, there's a spot at the center station right now. And furthermore, is it, I know that they said they're going to have an ambulance with possibly, with two paramedics, and then have a backup ambulance with a paramedic and possibly a basic on the second ambulance, but that was the second ambulance, not the first ambulance. But there is a spot at the center station right now for an ambulance, and they were only going to house one ambulance at this time.
And they did reduce their price to reflect that.
Right. Can I just, can I say one quick thing about, so I come from an EMS, I worked for AMR, worked for South Hadley Fire on the ambulance, stuff like that. And what happened with Action over in Hoyoke is that AMR didn't want the contract anymore, so Action came over, they took it. And what happened with Action is that they took on such a big, large scale, and AMR was so happy to get rid of Hoyoke because of how many calls they do, the hospital, all this other stuff. So they went in not knowing for a bigger city. But if you hear about Action out east, it's nothing but great things. And also, now that you talk to Hoyoke, that, you know, Hoyoke Fire and stuff like that, that I've talked to in the past couple of weeks, is that everything's changed with Action EMS, and everything's been really going really smooth and well with the city of Hoyoke.
Got just a couple more, that's it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Action does medical transport as well, which typically is a more lucrative line of work than actually doing EMS calls. So is there any assurances that we will have those two ambulances dedicated to the town rather than having to fight for ambulance availability with transports and other things than a private company would typically be going after?
Yeah, so point of clarification, it's one ambulance station in the town, 24/7, 365, and I think they will have a backup available as, you know, we have ebbs and flows, peaks and valleys, you know, they recognize that. So it's not two ambulance stations.
And the transporters down here.
Right, right. So just to be clear, when we point down here, we're talking on the corner, you know, of 47 and 38.
And we still have mutual aid also.
Correct, yeah.
And that doesn't go away, mutual aid.
Right.
That was my next question, actually.
I think one thing that is important is, we did an RFP, but that's not a contract.
Right.
So stuff that, you know, this committee looked at and said, it's great. In the past years, we've made recommendations, and, you know, maybe the first contract, it makes it in there and then it disappears the second. That's where it's going to be important that when you guys, as a Select Board, make the decision, and it really doesn't matter who you do, the contract needs to spell out some very important things. And so that we're going to hold these contractors, and that's what they are, contractor. Some of the stuff, I'll just bring it up, I mean, you brought up, you know, guaranteed ambulance, yes, that, I think in our RFP, it was one ambulance. They suggested that if it got busy, they could maybe shift something this way, but nothing is guaranteed for the second. But they did, they did, in our RFP, if something's going on in Hadley, you know, maybe it's the Memorial Day Parade, they would, they would bring an ambulance to stand by. They made that commitment, where we didn't get that commitment from Amherst. So some of that stuff will make up the difference, you know, if you're looking at strictly money. But it's really important that the Select Board, you know, runs it, you know, whether they run it back through our committee, because there's a lot of things that we've looked at over the 10 years that we've been on this committee, that is important. Some of the stuff is just simple daily run logs, you know, time in, time out. We've, over the years, have a very hard time getting that information. They promised us in their, in the meeting we had, that, you know, that's, that's nothing for them, they do that everywhere. And that's information that the Select Board or the committee can look at and say, hey, we got to make changes in the next contract. It's hard for us to get that information now.
I think some people were concerned with a non-fire department service running here in town, is that they can come in and they make it look good on paper, but we have to hold them to their, hold them to the fire, more or less, and how we want them to represent our town when they go out on these ambulance calls. And I think, like George says, it boils down to the contract.
Have we seen a draft contract or anything, or do we have?
No, we just have the RFP right now, but it is up to us to draw up that contract and send it to the lawyer, make sure we have everything in there that we want. It was a hard decision. We've had Amherst ambulance since 1947, and that's a long time for Amherst to be serving our community. They've served our community well, we have no doubt about that. I know firsthand from working with these guys that they are outstretched to the hilt over there, but they still put out top-notch care. So, I mean, that was a big transition for me, I would think I was the last holdout vote, because I know what they do, but I also understand what they're having to face over there in their staffing, in their having to do their runs and things like that, that is sometimes is overpowering for them, where they've had to call in backup from mutual aid themselves.
Well, because their funding's going to the general...
And they have six ambulances, so I mean, you know, for them to have to call backup to staff and to take care of everything is one of the things that we did take a look at.
I don't think any time during the day there's at least three of them going down room, none back and forth.
I would go to work and there'd be six of them sitting over there in the bay, so.
Let me just add, let me just add one thing, and that was, the one thing I really liked about Action, aside from their very, very professional presentation and the fact that all their executives came, the financial people and everything were there, and they were extremely open with us. But what it does is, it allows us to have top-notch ambulance service with the service that we need located right here in Hadley, some training to our fire department, but in the time that they're going to be here, it allows our fire department to get on its feet as a fire department. And that leadership going in those directions and stuff, rather than throwing something in right away and having it go from here to here. So I was, you know, that was a big plus for me, was to have the professional ambulances right here in this town, the medical part of this, and a part of it close by, but not part of it. They dispatched their own ambulances and stuff like that. So we're not getting into dispatches, we're not adding more personnel to have that ambulance here, which, again, is that one-time cost.
Well, look at the difference with what Amherst and what Action's going to charge. I think the difference is $67,000, correct? So for $67,000, you're going to get a paramedic-level service in the town, dedicated to the town, 24/7, 365. And because we're completely, because we are somewhat uncertain as to what the calls are in the town, because we haven't controlled that data since 1940, whatever George said.
27.
The Action EMS has also said, and the details will have to be flushed out from the contract, that some of that, if there are smaller revenues than they anticipated, that cost would actually be reduced.
Well, that was my next question about the rebates that you mentioned. So what are they proposing? I mean, we don't have a contract, so this could be something just thrown out there as a, oh yeah, we'll give you back some money, so we don't...
Calls.
Yeah, we don't have anything.
Right, right, and I think those can be ironed out in the actual contract.
And, you know, I think the intent tonight was, obviously, you know, we've been working on this a long time, so the intent was to bring this before the full board, specifically for the purpose of saying yea or nay on moving forward with Action. But then we know that there's, to your point, the devil's in the details of the contract. So the next logical step would be working with David, obviously, to get a contract drafted. We'll be able to get existing contracts with other municipalities that work with Action to see what's in there. Obviously, we'll do our due diligence that way, bring it back to the work group, since we're the ones who spent all the time going through the RFP and getting the details, and then that contract would then come back to the board.
So how long is Amherst's bid good for? When does that expire? So basically...
It's not a bid. This is the thing, they, Amherst did not reply to the RFP, so the only involvement we had with Amherst was, you know, a conversation around the table. David did, in preparation for the meeting, ask the town manager to quit the 200 and, excuse the 180.
200 for the first year, 245 for the second year.
In writing, but there's no guarantee on those numbers. What everybody should understand too, because I had the misfortune of bothering to look at some comments that were out on Mass Life or the Gazette, or I don't know what, but I was curious to see if anybody made comments about the news articles that ran on it, it was almost been Mass Life. There was one posting, and unless I missed... ran on it, it's almost been Mass Life, um, there was one posting, and unless I missed part of it, whoever made the post didn't understand, it sounded like Action was significantly more expensive than AMR's, um, and they weren't taking into account the fact that when AMR's came to the table, they started at four hundred and ninety thousand, so in AMR's mind, they truly believe, and we will argue this all day long, but they truly believe that the town of Hadley is costing them four hundred and ninety thousand, and they said that they recognized that they can't kinda get from the hundred and forty thousand starting point up to that four ninety, but they made it clear, that's the direction that they're going in, um, because they feel, and understandably so, if that's, if that's how they're looking at it, they feel that they're accountable to their own taxpayers and AMR's, and feel that any other municipalities should be paying their fair share, we will argue that fair share point all day long, but the two hundred, two forty-five was a significant concession, so, you know, in, in my mind, um, I think it's, um, you know, not even a question that we'd be looking at significant additional increases as we moved along here with AMR's, you could make the argument that once Action comes in with their two-plus-one contract, they could do the same thing.
Right.
But, again...
But their business model hasn't supported that either.
Exactly.
Their business model has been relatively more like
Cost of living or, or CPI.
Well, that's all they do, they're not also a fire department, they're not also answering to a town administrator or
Right.
A board of selectmen or anything else, that's what they do.
Very political.
They're apolitical, they provide medical emergency service to an area, I think, that's what.
My only concern is that while we're working out the contract details, uh, we have, what, until July is when the current contract expires, so if we don't get this ironed out in a manner that's acceptable to the, to the select board and the town residents, uh, you know, we could be in a, in a bad place come July, with, with having no service or being forced to pay whatever AMR's demands, so it's, it's
Well, our, our intent is to get this done quickly.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to say something, um, just to back up what Joyce said, um, so, when you have an ambulance service, anywhere, no matter what you have, is that you have a zoning plan, you probably, you were an EMT before, so you have a zoning plan, so Action has to have a zoning plan, and that's considered the mutual aid policy with Northampton, AMR's, South Hadley, South Deerfield, it's all the surrounding, whatever, it all depends on a radius and everything like that, and furthermore is if we do go, if the town does go with Action, uh, the EMT basics right now in Hadley can actually work off of their licenses to carry, um, Narcan and Epinephrine, right now, we cannot, I'm, um, trying to go forward with that with an E, um, emergency first responding with Cooley-Dixon Hospital and, uh, OEMS, um, through Northampton, um, but that's, that's even a lot of work for me to, even just to get that, that's almost a six months period, just if, say if we do stay with AMR's, for us to carry that stuff, it's gonna be six months before we even carry any of that stuff, um, so if we did have Action, we can go underneath their license, um, and work off of that also.
And so this is all inclusive, we don't, we're working out their medical direction, we're working out their, their licenses and everything, the town does not have to pay for anything additional?
Right, it'd be for us to work up, so, for us, for EMTs, to give aspirin, to give epinephrine for allergic reaction, to give Narcan, um, you know, the police have Narcan, they can push it, 'cause that's on, you know, a different story.
Right.
Subject, you know, me as an EMT basic, I can't carry it in town Hadley.
Right.
So, um, that's what we're trying to go for too, um, and also glucose, you know, we, we can't carry that, so we can work underneath them, it's like a part B, I'm pretty sure, of their license.
But that's something that, within two years, and I think that, that was the driving factor, um, in wanting to make sure that we went ahead to at least get a basic ambulance up and running, and you have to have a basic ambulance up and running before you can even go to an ALS, so there's steps that you have to take before you can advance to anything, um, further than that.
Right.
I, I was just gonna say, yeah, I think that this is like a good interim solution, but I just feel like when we're looking at the long-term, how do we plan accordingly? Because I think that had we, had, the, the drawback is we don't have any, uh, scale to really get the cost-effectiveness for an ambulance service, so, you know, in the future, is there, we're talking about investing a lot of money into an ambulance and different services, you know, having a regional approach seems like it could be more cost-effective in the long-term, maybe this business somehow is more cost-effective, I don't know all the numbers, but that's my only concern is, don't wanna pigeonhole us down a path where we're committed to this company and then we try to, to go back to AMR's and all of a sudden, the price is double what this is, or something along those lines, or we get pigeonholed, but...
There are some other options, I mean, there is South County,
Yeah.
Uh, which isn't that far from us either, that is, you know, taking care of Sunderland and that area there, um, so there are other options for us to look at, again,
Yeah.
To get us to where we wanna be in two years, this seemed to be like the best option for us.
Well, I think we had a unique RFP too, because the RFP, uh, was crafted in such a way to help build, help having build a program, and for some reason, the select board decided that wasn't the way they wanted to go, a different RFP is gonna attract, I think, more vendors to the table than this particular RFP did.
Correct, and can I, uh, just on the numbers, just, uh, so I just want a slightly different, different spin on it, um, I will freely admit that it's not a foregone conclusion to me that we're gonna have an in-house BLS in two years, I'm, from the standpoint, and I'm gonna leverage off of what Hank said, um, this is giving us an opportunity to develop a, the fire department that we're just building out now, to assess the skill sets, the management, all of that, um, logic says to me that, from, from what the chief has said and what we've heard from other people, that it would make financial sense for us to go in that direction, but, you know, that may be two years down the road, it may be four years down the road, we're also getting really good data for the first time, so, and I don't, I'm not sure that one point six million came from John, I don't, I don't ever remember hearing that number about the...
Mike presumed it out of the select board.
Yeah, no, I, I
And that was a startup.
I don't think so, but, um, but I, it's, it allows us the time to do exactly the analysis that Christian's talking about, and I mean, we have not sat down and really fully crunched out those numbers, because quite frankly, Chief Spankable hasn't had the help that he's got right now, so he's got Evans' expertise on board, um, new hires coming on, we'll have the time, and what we talked about in, in the committee was not waiting until the end of the Action EMS contract in its third year to say, "Oh, maybe we should start looking at, uh, what a BLS might look like and how we ramp up to it," that we're committed, if the select board will allow, to really just continuing to push forward here, and maybe not with the current composition of the committee, but having some sort of public safety work group that's focused on holding all of our feet to the fire, to make sure that that analysis continues, that we collect the proper data, that the chief and whoever he needs to start building out what those financial scenarios might look like actually happens, and it happens, to David's point, not at the eleventh hour when somebody could pull the rug out from under us, but it's really setting us ourselves up for making a sound decision two years down the road from now, I don't feel like we have that information, quite frankly, from AMR's, um, and again, it's just the nature of the reporting that they have, is Hank said, you know, they're not running it like a commercial enterprise, these folks will be, so that's really important to me, um, what's most important to me is underscoring the response times and the quality of care, under no set of circumstances should the select board ever put the town in a position where we run the risk of taking a step backwards, um, and I, certainly, if there's anything I had heard that would lead me down that path, but would not at all be suggesting a change, but, um, we think we're doing right by the residents and the, and the folks that go through this town every day to have that ambulance nearby.
So, my question is, as far as our, our vote tonight, is there a way that we can, I mean, I, at this point, without seeing the contract and, and seeing the details, um, I just, I don't think I can support saying, "Yes, we're going with Action tonight," and, you know, pushing AMR's off, um, I guess, are we voting just to make, take the next step forward to start drafting that contract, or are we making the final determination tonight that, yes, we are choosing Action regardless?
Well, I think we're choosing Action subject to a favorable, um, contract negotiation, right, I mean, that, that's typically how this, this would work, and to be honest with you, we don't have any, I mean, the contract we have from AMR's is a couple of pages, I mean, there, there's no
Right.
No meat to it right now.
You know, there's one thing regarding the contract, if, if you read the RFP, it's pretty detailed.
Right.
I mean, i- i- it truly is, some of the stuff probably won't make it into the contract because we did a lot of, you know, scenario A, scenario B, scenario C, so a lot of that can be cleaned out, i- i- it really is, is, it, it won't take the committee long to, if you, if somebody gets something in a doc, you know, in documentation that, that would resemble a contract you need, it, a lot of the background is already done, you know, it's, it's really, and, and maybe I'm wrong, is we can go through relatively quick, making sure everything's there, and then somebody has to do the legal side and, and the stuff that has to be done for the town side, but the actual contract, a lot of that is, was in the RFP, uh, regarding if somebody goes and changes their, their mind, I mean, they have to be spoken to, but, rela-, I mean, I, I would think that would be relatively quick, I think our RFP was thirty pages, um, by no means is that the contract, but I mean, a- all the ideas were, were put into it, you know, there might be some changes, um, I mean, some of the stuff I think that the select board needs to look at too, is you, you're gonna be having non-town employees access to the whole fire station, you know, some, some, some kind of guidelines have to be drawn up, whether it's the police department, fire department, whoever does that, some of that stuff has to happen, um, you know, how, how they interact there, uh, but that's stuff that should happen before they, they move in, but I think the contract itself, I don't see where there's a lot of movement on, on what they've already agreed to.
Like any RFP will promise you the world,
Right.
When it comes down to contract time, so, you know, one thing that I think residents would need to see and, and meet would be financial penalties for not meeting their response times or not meeting their promises in the contract, because a couple-page contract luckily have with AMR's isn't gonna cut it with a private company.
We did speak to that, uh, at different, I, I don't think that made it into the RFP, but we, we spoke to that too.
I just, um, listening to both Action and to AMR's, this is just my opinion, um, when Action came, they were very professional, we just talked about that, with, with AMR's, when they did come, I found out about that we did have quite the contract, where they promised us numbers, where they promised us, uh, housing, you know, that they were gonna have someone here, and, and they never followed through with any of that, when we brought up concerns that, that, um, people down in Hockenham, down in, towards South Hadley, were gonna be, many, many times, it's past ten minutes wait time, that ten-minute wait time or longer, that, that was just unacceptable, I didn't, no matter what the cost was, so we, uh, we asked, "How about regionalize, how about moving just one ambulance here, how about, um, what would if, if South Hadley could pick it up?" Nothing, nothing would work, they had no options, so, they, it, at that point, in my mind, when they couldn't come up with anything, I felt like we needed to have someone, no matter what the cost was, that we needed to have an ambulance that was in Hadley, because they, they couldn't come up with anything that I felt that could get the people in, in South Ha-, towards South Hadley, uh, Hockenham, covered, I just didn't feel strong enough about them.
And periodically, throughout the years, South Hadley has came over to Hadley and Sunderland has come into Hadley, just because of the response.
They, the, the, what, when we mentioned South Hadley, maybe they could cover, they said, "Well, their BL, the ALS is too far away, that, that, the only one they could cover would be BLS," and, and so...
District two.
District two, yes, yeah, district one would be about almost twenty-five to thirty minutes out, when we actually came one time to Lane Manor, it took us about thirty minutes, and the radio communication was, was, was awful, um, 'cause we didn't know to go to Hadley, we didn't know to go to AMR's, no one told us anything, they just told us the address, it was for such and such, and we tried signing on different frequencies and no one was answering us, so we didn't even know until we got there, it was actually a really ill person, and my partner was a paramedic and he was very upset because of, we didn't get the correct information on that patient.
Sounds like so, about to use some radios.
They also actually had some amazing, amazing technology as well, they talked to us about, they had, they had technology where they could, um, if, like, groups of seniors wanted to put, uh, put into this, where they could, uh, have a database where it would say, "Oh, we're going to this house," it would come up, "Oh, you have COPD and you have, uh, you have heart problems," it would come up on their way there, so they would know what they're getting themselves into, they had some amazing technology.
Or they have a dog, or go to the back door because the front door's been blocked for years with, you know, all of that.
It's all with the new CAD system that's going out there for the...
Yeah, AMR's may have that too, we just don't know.
I think they're in the process.
Yeah, right.
And hundreds of towns have already switched to privatized ambulances, so a lot of this stuff, the, the, the learning curve has been done by a lot of people, so I think, I think we're actually in a good place for it.
Like I said, the other, the other big issue, and I'm sure you looked at it, was when Sunderland had their own, Weyly had their own, and South Deerfield had their own, I mean, they regionalized for a reason, it had to be financially, because I did get into one of them.
They didn't have the calls to support their own individuals.
They're doing, they're doing, I talked to those, um, South County, and they, they're doing a thousand calls, we're doing a thousand calls alone, just about, in Hadley alone.
And that's not counting the Mullins Center, that's not counting the football stadium.
We should, yeah.
Have you guys applied for any kind of grant for an ambulance?
We haven't, you know, we
The reason I, I asked that, I was at a workshop, Plannable, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, cities and towns under, under the populations of, uh, seven thousand, this lady from, there's all kinds of different places to look for grants, and she, on her screen, she showed a full-blown ambulance all in there, that towns could apply for that, and I did talk to the fire chief and I'm gonna, I got a call into Boston, and so I'm gonna relay it to the fire chief for, for him to look into it.
Thank you.
And, and also to, um, Turner's Falls up in Franklin County, they actually just started their, uh, BLS ambulance, um, I have a couple of friends that are captains up there, and Med Care takes care of the first call, they take care of the second call, Med Care backs them up with ALS if it's an ALS call, uh, Greenfield actually just also went that way too, Med Care still covers them, but they just got a BLS ambulance, so they're heading that direction too, so that's a diff-, so I talked to Chief Spankable about that, and we are gonna reach out to those departments to see what steps they took to try and make things go a lot smoother if we go this route.
Once the, once our team's all set, is it worth going up to this, again, to see what there's?
We had thought about that, but because of the, and we had talked to the, some other ambulance services, um, and because of the way the RFP is and what we were looking for, they had no interest in, uh, doing that, we did talk to Pioneer, um, which is the other private ambulance in the area, uh, which has a very good reputation, but they had, uh, no interest because they were saying that the amount of calls that we had were not enough to sustain them alone, so, that's what they had told us. So, call for a vote?
Vote on, can we just define it for David's question?
So, I, I guess, I wouldn't mind motioning to move forward with drafting a contract or take, or, and I wouldn't mind allocating the funds and making the funds available so we can figure this out for town meeting, what I don't wanna do is say, "Yes, we are going to Action EMS," until we've seen, drafted a contract and seen a contract.
It's, it's not legal binding until you have a contract. And am I misspeaking, won't that contract come back to the select board?
Yes, it will, and, um, I was searching through my databases here, 'cause I'm, you know, we, we put together this RFP back in August, and so I'm having a hard time remembering components, but I, it's just, doesn't matter, of course, I always append a standard contract to...
There was a lot of legal language that...
So, it was there, so we have, we have the basis for a contract.
Yeah, I don't remember a specific contract attached to the RFP, but I'd have to go back, it's been a while since we've been talking about that.
I, I just don't wanna give the townspeople the impression that we're just making this leap without having everything finalized, and I just want everybody to understand that we're not just making this jump and that we're gonna get it in writing.
Well, I think, like you're saying is, they come in with one face, but they have a different face.
Right.
I think what you're doing is accepting the recommendation of our study group back to the board, that, you know, we're saying, based on everything that we looked at, that Action Ambulance would be what we would say, now, we didn't have negotiating authority, so we couldn't negotiate with anybody, so now the next phase of this is negotiating with, with Action.
So, now the next phase of this is negotiating with Action and possibly even Amherst. As far as I know, there's nothing in writing from Amherst yet, right? It's all just verbal communication. And it's changed three times.
At this point, financially, it may be worth going out to bid again through service. You know, you may have North Hadley, and Amherst's been on it.
Then what are we going to do July 1, John?
Yeah, I don't think you have the time.
We don't have the time.
I think we... They had an opportunity as in Amherst to look at the RFP and make us some proposal in writing. And, they didn't. And there was enough things in there. The ambulants didn't have to be put at our station. All it was, is they had to tell us where it was, and we'd make a decision whether it was too far or not. So, there's a lot of things there that we're open to anybody to bid on it. Some, it was, you know, 911, 911E. Right now, we just ship all ambulance calls to Amherst. So, some ambulance services didn't want to get involved. So, but Action said, "No problem. We have a 911 operator that..." Don't quote me on this, I think it's in Hoyo, "that those calls would go to, they would dispatch out all EMSs." So, if somebody needed, you know, to be taught CPR over the phone, they would be doing all that. So, they would be triaging, and the ambulance would get going. Amherst had the opportunity to do all that. And, they didn't. And when they did come to us, they answered most of our questions. They did come with a bunch of paperwork that we'd been asking for, for three years. They showed up that night with them. But, they weren't... They really didn't look at anything other than, "Nothing changes. If we have some big event in Hadley, you're not going to get an ambulance there to stand by, you're not..." So, they didn't even look at the... Or they looked at the RFP, but they really didn't want to... The RFP had plenty of places for you to put your comments in, or "This is what we're going to bid." And they didn't. You know, maybe if they think they're going to lose it, they'll change their mind. But, you know, at some point, we have to move on this. July 1 is coming quick, and I think even at breakneck speed, to get a contract ready for that, you know, some type of decision, whether we do it, like Molly said, it's... You're voting for Action pending, you know, a contract, which you guys would have to sign anyways.
Yeah. It's important to note that their lead time was less than thirty days.
They'd find something.
Right. But, I think their preference was thirty days.
Yeah. So, I will make a motion that the Select Board accepts the recommendation of the ambulance work group to move forward with contract negotiations with Action EMS, subject to final approval of this way.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Can we just modify that motion to, I guess, if we need to, to allocate the funds, so that way it's available? Or do we need to do that separately?
We'll be doing that.
I think, yeah, I think that might be part of parcel of what we're talking about. I did put together a funding strategy for both scenarios, going to the town of Amherst and going with the Action EMS. Senator Brown, it's in your board talks. I don't know if anybody had difficulty with the approach that I'm suggesting here.
Finance Committee, did you guys...
I reviewed it. So, I'm going along with what David's approach was. That's what I was thinking before he even put it in. So, I agree.
All those in favor?
And I'd just like to thank...
Absolutely.
Do you want to thank? Wait. You're a good thinker. Yeah, you're a good thinker.
Thank you to the ambulance working group for all your efforts this past year, but certainly we'll want you to take a look at the contract when it's up also.
Yeah.
If you're willing to take a look at the contract, we can call you together to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Right at your service, ma'am chair.
Good night.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Good, how are you?
Good. David.
He's a little bit... I'm due for heat.
Lots of new windows.
You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go, go.
Blair.
See you tomorrow.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Okay, where are we going now? Let's see, how about the...
I think you've finished all your work on the warrant and budget now.
Okay. So, do we need to vote on that? Who signed it?
Sign the warrant.
Signed it. Do we have some numbers to go into that blank spot there? I would like to, if we have any, well, the ambulance one, but you know, we're the... This one, page twelve. I'm not filling those blanks ahead of time. Appreciate this. Appropriate the sum and monies, do we have?
Oh, no, I'm going to have to work on it.
Oh, you don't have that tonight?
No. I was waiting for your consent, so I'm on the ambulance.
All right. How about the... How about the... Were you able to look at that? And that was okay? So, everything is okay? Anything for the Finance Committee? Do we need to look at anything else?
As far as the warrant or the budget?
The warrant? Yeah. And the budget, I mean.
Yeah, the only one as far as what we were looking to do tonight as the Finance Committee, since we posted, is we skipped over the demand fees.
Article thirteen.
Article thirteen. I don't know, did you vote on that, Mark I D?
I think we did.
You did.
The Select Board voted for one.
Yeah, I think that...
Not from the last time we...
Five to nothing.
Eleven to one.
Yeah.
And thirteen.
Article eleven right now.
Article eleven.
That's okay. They changed. I'm just getting...
It changed.
Eleven is the...
All right. How about sixteen? Sixteen.
Do we have that? Yeah, we already voted that.
Yes.
Oh, it's Finance Committee.
Oh, thanks. I got it. So, okay, so, since you've already voted, if you don't mind, we'll see if there's... Do we have a motion to...
What was the... What was yours? Ours was four to one.
Four to one, in favor.
Changing the fee from fifteen dollars to thirty?
To thirty. We have a motion, and then, do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Second? Any discussion? No? So, all in favor of that? Aye. So, we'll do three.
Three, sure.
Yeah, please.
So, we'll announce it on the floor, the warrant's been posted already.
Okay, yeah.
And so, we're not... So, I was talking to David earlier on the petition articles. I've had people approaching me saying that it'd be really helpful for them to know where the Select Board stands on the ones that are related to the senior center and the lot. That said, I think that David said in the past, we have not taken a position on petitioned Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so in the past, you've allowed the democratic process to unfold.
Oh, on Article fourteen and fifteen, there was a note to contact Capitol Committee?
Yeah.
I don't know...
So, on fourteen, we were talking about possibility of borrowing, which I don't recommend, since we have $1.7 million. No benefit and it'd be against our financial management policy to borrow in that situation. The other one was the North Hadley Congregational Church, and whether it was okay to give money to a religious organization from public funds. And, I talked to council, and council said it depends. Depends on the purpose of the money, whether they're throwing a mesh for themselves, if it's structured in such a way that we would be supporting a particular religious or a set of religious activities or not. So, Andy Morris Freeman sent me the original application from the church. I've sent it on to council, and council will have a decision, an opinion on that by the time we get to town meeting. And this is based upon the recent SJC's case out of Act.
Can you turn it on over this one? Okay. Anything else with the warrant?
I think you're done.
Okay. We have the... We have the budget?
Budget? So, I guess it would be what we're looking at right now, that David has, the... Just what to do with the new...
The option two.
Option two.
Would it be helpful if I just walked through it? Because there's a couple of different ways that we can do this. Is it the same on the time?
Hello, David?
Okay. So, last week, the Finance Committee made a recommendation for budget pending the final decision on Action EMS or the town of Amherst ambulance service. At that time, we needed to close a gap of $213,000 and change. We decided that we would fund the school at $105,000 of the annual town meeting and defer till the special town meeting, the remaining $53,000 and change for the schools. I've talked to Annie McKenzie about this. We would use the House Ways and Means local aid adjustment, that's almost $90,000 of boost that we got from the House Ways and Means. Thank you very much. And then going back into the local receipts, adjusting them north by $71,000. So, that was the plan last week. This week, we've now added $67,500 further to be funded. So, the balance is a negative $280,816. We give the schools $105, deferring till the special town meeting, $53,316. So, that means that the shortfall is now $227,500. We use the local aid, we use the local receipts, and then we do a transfer of stabilization to OPEB of $67,500. And then, if that frees up $67,500 of free cash to be applied to the budget to bring it into balance. So, that is the plan. The targets that we're trying to achieve, one, can we maintain pace with our free cash spending policy? That means that can we keep our free cash expenditures below $200,000 for recurring items within the budget? And we would be spending $197,500, which is on target, really on target. Could we keep $75,000 of free cash for future capital needs? We would end up with $87,000 of free cash for capitals. So, we achieved that target. And then, the stabilization fund, if we did a drawdown of $67,500, could we remain within our 10% of net operating revenues? Could we maintain the stabilization fund at least 10% of net operating revenues? So, taking the FY '17 numbers, which are the last numbers that I have available, we would reduce free cash stabilization rather by $67,500. That would draw the stabilization balance from 13.41% of net operating revenues to 12.98% of net operating revenues. So, we achieved that goal as well.
But, we would still be above our $2 million mark.
We'd be above $2 million mark, and you're actually making a smarter investment, because you'd be transferring stabilization to OPEB, which is the same kind of reserve, that's the way that the auditors will look at it. But, the OPEB is going to give you a better rate of return over the long term. So, you're actually reinvesting that money and also protecting it, because once it goes into OPEB, it can only be used for OPEB purposes. You can't reallocate that money later on, whereas you can with stabilization. There are a couple of other scenarios that I looked at. I wanted to split the difference between stabilization, between OPEB and free cash. Every time I went and worked the numbers, we ended up not achieving our goals one way or the other. There was always a diminished financial condition for the town with these scenarios. So, that's my recommendation.
This is one time where I don't mind doing stabilization for OPEB. I've been a big bugaboo about touching stabilization, but then again, it would be a two-thirds vote.
Two, it's going to be a two-thirds, yeah, two-thirds majority voting.
Take it from stabilization.
And we're going to be taking this vote at both the annual town meeting and the fall town meeting, because we'll have certified free cash at the fall town meeting, which we don't have right now, or we don't have enough right now.
John? Previous contributions to OPEB were higher than $67,000.
That's correct.
Why has it been reduced such?
It would not be reduced. We would be funding OPEB at $263,000. I would just paint all of that out of free cash.
So, that's what you're short, sixty-seven?
I'm transferring $67,000 from stabilization into the $263,000. And then, that frees up some free cash to be spent on recurring items.
What's the vote required to take money out of stabilization?
Two-thirds majority.
A dollar to four-fifths?
Two-thirds?
Two-thirds.
Sure?
We're just putting all that $53,316 for the school? I mean, can we split them? They're not the only ones that are over. Can we split that up between the school and the ambulance, or anything like that for a vote? Or is it they could just pack them all into one line item, that whole amount?
I think that the difficulty with shorting the ambulance line item would be that we might be in a situation where we can't sign contracts.
Yeah.
Or we can't legally pay contracts, so we don't have enough money for that. That's an accounting issue that we don't want to run afoul of.
The other thing we've done in the past, and again, my own opinion, is in a situation like this, obviously, free cash is not guaranteed, but we have a pretty good sense now that, you know, we should have these funds available, but be able to articulate to the schools that funding the $53,000 would be a priority. And I'm more than happy to make that statement to the school committee and to the superintendent.
And we have done that in the past too. This isn't the first time that we would fund them at fall town meeting either, so we did honor our commitment to them.
So, the only other open item in the budget, which we can't settle now, is our union contract negotiations and the financial impact on that. So, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to defer as little as possible to the fall town meeting, because we're going to need some capacity to address those obligations. I looked at the... I looked at the revenues for the first three quarters of the year. And, when I prepared the FY... When I prepared the February 5 budget, I had only five or six months of revenue projections at that time. We were looking at smaller numbers. We were looking at less development in FY '19, commercial and residential development, less economic activity. The three quarters of three... The three quarters revealed that all of our... Uh, the three quarter of three, the three quarters revealed that all of our revenue projections are trending north of where they need to be. Uh, so I think uncomfortable adding the 71,000 into the local receipts because we have big money coming into building inspections, hotel meals, excise, um, some of the other larger, uh, the other larger departmental returns are coming in. And talking to the assessor this morning, there's a number of, of sources of funds that are very likely that we can't count on because of the complexities of municipal accounting and reporting to the Department of Revenue, but we know that are coming. So the 95, uh, suite hotel, all right, there's all that revenue that's not getting count. There's a solar array that's coming online, uh, July 1st, so that's $14,000 right there. Uh, there's host community agreements with marijuana establishments, which are worth at minimum $50,000 each. So can't count years of, in this budget cycle, but come fall, we should be in a better position than where we are right now, so.
So do you need to have us vote on this? Are we just-
Or at least not a sec.
Or a what?
At least not a sec.
Not a sec.
Yeah, I recommend moving forward with option two.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for that.
Bye.
Yes. Okay. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Okay, we're good. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's, let's get Marlo out of here a decent hour. How about water and sewer rates, Marlo?
Uh, yes, uh, we met last week or the week before for the second time to discuss the, the water sewer rate, uh, study, uh, that we put together with Ty and Bond. Uh, we came in the first night and we had a recommendation. Uh, the figures were really high per year as far as what we're looking at, uh, needing to increase the rates. So I went back to the drawing board with the capital and with Ty and Bond and we moved some things around. Um, and so I came up, we came up with a second recommendation. I think it was two weeks old, I'm losing my weeks here, or it wasn't last week, it was the week before. Uh, so at the end of that meeting, I think, um, members of the board requested, uh, five, five pieces of the information from the model, uh, which I, uh, sent down to David the next day. Um, we poked around, we looked through some more things and, um, basically the five pages is, is, is where I'm landing, um, as far as my recommendation, uh, for this year.
That's 550?
Yes.
So for tonight, we're just acknowledged, received the, uh, the recommendation, we have to go to a full public hearing next week on this.
And if there's anything that comes up, feel free to reach out and I can give you the information.
What have we done with the 6.7% and the 10% so far?
Can you, can you give me context on that, what are you talking about?
We raised the rates already.
Oh, you're looking at the, uh-
What did we do with that money?
That money is used to fund the operations of both enterprise funds.
And how much have we taken out to offset the general budget?
Well, those numbers are right in your budget there.
Administrative costs.
Yep. Let me bring those up for you. So FY18, the water administration was $249,000. Waste water administration was $230,485. H-PAT was $8,589. For the most part, those are going down in FY19. So the water administration drops nearly $50,000 from, drops $44,000 from 249 down to 205. And sewer drops by 18,000 from 230 down to 212.
So I have a question. These are basically chargebacks, is that what they are for?
Yeah, so-
Location, so.
So the principle is that the enterprise fund should be totally self-supported, there should be no hidden taxpayer support for the sewer. It pays for all the hidden costs associated with benefits and benefit administration and other kinds of, uh, administrative oversight, collections, et cetera.
I just think if we're gonna go and ask for a, a raise, that those funds need to go to the water sewer departments rather than be rated for other purposes in town or chargebacks, you know, for other, other departments.
Exactly.
Because we need to fund these repairs and the capital purposes, so I think.
Well, you know, and like I said, in the past, for the past 35 years I've been there, when we had a failure, we went to, uh, it went through capital, through debt exclusion, and it was paid for and it was fixed. That way it doesn't, it won't keep compounding like we do with these rates. These rates are never gonna go down. And my bill was quite high and I, you must have received emails from some people on fixed incomes already on how this 6.7% and 10% has affected them. And I've been saying it right along, and I'm saying it again.
So you've been saying it all along and you were disappointed that in prior years the board didn't move to increase rates. So were you arguing against yourself or you arguing for-
No, I made a statement of a half a percent or 1% five years ago and nothing was done.
But we can't, we can't unring the bell. So what I'm asking is now, it sounds like you're making an argument that we shouldn't, or are you just-
Oh, no, no, no.
You're just complaining about the way it all evolved?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
I agree. We should have raised rates and we did, but now we have to do something.
Admitting to guilt, I love it.
I didn't say I'm guilty.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, yeah, so again, you know, I think we've had that discussion, but questions will be during that.
I'm absolutely not for that, that type of increase right now at this point. I mean, after we just raised them and, like I said, for the emergencies that we do have coming up, we're gonna have to do something on, on an emergency basis, on a debt exclusion.
But John, if we don't raise them now, the 5 and the 15, aren't we just gonna put ourselves in exactly the situation that you don't-
We don't know.
Is there any way to assure people that that money will remain in the water sewer department rather than be charged back to other departments or used for the general budget purposes? Is there any way to-
Well, by virtue of the fact that those chargebacks are going down.
Yeah, right. It's getting better, but, yeah.
Yeah.
So the charge, the chargebacks, every, every year I have Mr. Duquevitz comes into my office and says, is my tax dollars paying anything for the sewer? And the administrative chargebacks ensure that I can say, no, Mr. Duquevitz, it's a self-sustaining, uh, enterprise fund independent of the tax base. Um, so that's the reason why those administrative charges are there and, and yes, they are going down and that's a good thing.
Right.
My budget problems will be solved if I just level funded them, but I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna go by the formulas that are built within the administrative chargeback. So is the money gonna stay within the, within the enterprise fund? Yeah, it's gonna pay for things that the enterprise fund needs to pay for.
Do your fiscal year 18 numbers on this chart reflect the increase in rates?
Last year?
Yeah.
Yes, they do. I, I think, uh, if we go back and we, if we want, I can give you a little history on that. I believe that's what kinda triggered, well, DEP wanted out of their sanitary survey, wanted a water study, but I think what triggered the sewer part of it was, I, I think I stated back then, looking at the numbers, that, that 10% is only gonna slow down that graph from, from diving, uh, slow down that pace.
And that, on this, I'm sorry, we don't have it here, so everybody can see it, but the blue bars, that's the cost and the yellow dots are the revenue? Is that how it is?
Uh, the yellows-
Well, the sewer ratio-
The yellows retained earnings target, what they call retained earnings target.
Okay. Cause it just looks flat even though the rates went up, but I know 2017 was the, well, I guess that would be a fiscal year 2017 would have been a drought year versus a non-drought year, so I don't know if there was more water consumption.
Right.
That, that's why that line is flat.
Right. And sewer, sewer really jumped for, for, well, one reason, when mine had closed their, their plant for accepting sludge. Our sludge jump, I think it was, uh, estimated to jump 80,000 a year to haul the lull. We ended up getting a pretty good deal with lull, but still very expensive, so I packed that out of the budget, this past budget, uh, but we're still looking at $162,000 a year to haul our sludge.
Until some, a better plan comes up.
I've been in numerous meetings for Greenfields, Amorobic Digest, or that's an opportunity, there's, there's word that Springfield may get one going. Uh, you know, a lot of that money's hauling costs, you know, all the way to lull, so, um, you know, and other expenses go up from-
It's roughly $5,000 a month just for truck.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I signed a $20,000 bill yesterday.
What I hear here between the water and the sewer, the chargebacks are $400,000. $200,000 for one, $200,000 for that?
Yeah.
That, to me, is totally insane. I argued that when I was sewer commission. The DPW could hire the staff to do everything, the bill and everything, and hand a check to the town for not even a quarter of what that $200,000 is. That, what it looks to me, that's all they're doing here is robbing Peter to pay Paul. I argued with before, it was unjust before, and now it's totally out of hand. I, I, I just can't believe it. $400,000? Can you think how much it would cost you for personnel to process bills, to collect bills and do that? That's administration? You gotta be kidding me.
So, I mean, and it also includes health insurance, uh, and other benefits for the employees, that those benefits are not paid for through the water and sewer departments. So this is all spelled out in excruciating detail in the budget book. Uh, there is a formula there that, uh, happy to walk you through it. Uh, it's been reviewed by the Department of Revenue, they had no, no problem with-
Can I get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
It's in the budget book.
I'd like to see that.
I'm gonna email it to you right now.
Did you have any questions?
Wow.
All right, so what do we need to do?
Um, so I'll make a recommendation, well, that we're really just acknowledging this, so we don't really have to play that.
Yeah, I mean, in order to vote on rates, you have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Next week.
This was my final recommendation.
Yeah.
And I, I do wanna add that from the first meeting we had, I mean, we were sitting with 40% of the top of sewer. It took a lot of work to move things around, um, so we can continue our services and, and get some capital in. Um, so we, we backed that down to 15, but, you know, I, I just wanna say that that's gonna be hitting rock bottom at 19 and covering our operational costs, our budget, our regular budget, and then it's gonna start rebounding after that. So, I mean, it's an important thing to know.
You know, and not even before when I was on a board over the last 30 years, Joyce, and you know it, we've been back and forth about capital through taxation for repairs to the sewer. And without the malls and the industrial area, the rest of town is going to pay more. It, it really needs to be discussed again for major infrastructure repairs for water and sewer to come out of capital through taxation. And at least you're accounting for that.
So wouldn't, shouldn't that be really pushed by the capital planning committee? And a constant management team?
Yeah, so there's two, two things. So you've got a, you've got a debt, you've got a number of debt policies, one of which is that if you have a special revenue, for, it's a special revenue, uh, project, it should be paid for, the debt service should be paid for through the special revenue. So it's a fancy way of saying if it's a water project, water rates should pay for it. Um, so you could amend your policy if you wish.
Well, we did it with the two pump stations, that's through the sewer rates.
Right, right, but you didn't do it with the water treatment plant.
Yeah.
You split it 50/50 or 60/60, that worked out.
You know, and, and not to be repetitive, but we have 964 users for sewer as opposed to 2,000 and something for water, so, you know, you've got a lot of, you know, not to be repetitive, we have a lot of infrastructure in its age.
There's a lot of loose ends in the last 10 years since the DPW has been implemented. And the, the departments in both of them, although we got two, uh, enterprise funds, the departments are split a third, a third, a third, and, and nobody knew the real numbers, you know? It's the same thing we're gonna run into with the fire department and the ambulance service. You know, in the last 10 years, you spent over a million dollars on DPW that still got a lot of loose ends that need to be straightened out.
Maybe we're finally working on those.
No, no, absolutely is, but it's been 10 years and it's been a slow process.
And as a lot of things have been slow, you know, it just, when money hasn't been there, you haven't been able to do it.
And it's still not there.
And it's still not there, so I mean, you know, you can only do so much when there's one pot to pick from, you know?
Yeah, I mean, 10 years construction cost, it got 30%, so it's hard to compare it on.
All right, so let's, at what time will we have a public hearing next week? What time is that gonna be posted?
Uh, let's bring that up. Has that public hearing at 8:00 PM?
And for the public, all this is on board docs and can we put it on TV5 maybe?
And they can go back on YouTube?
Yeah.
And see it?
Because of, with the mona complaints, and with the mona complaints I've had already with the second, second billing second now?
Or the fourth?
Fourth billing second now.
Yeah, I think you're right though, the second with the new rates.
Yeah, second with the new rates.
Yep.
Um, and the complaints are starting to come in.
All right.
So in 2:00 PM?
8:00 PM, 2:00 PM. Public hearing on sewer and water rates. Okay.
Does Marlo have anything to do with that sign?
I'm sorry?
Does Marlo have anything to do with that sign?
Vacuum care sign in town right of way?
No, he doesn't.
No?
But he does have a, I was gonna bring it up in my town administrator's report, we might as well talk about, uh, the, uh, the emergency sewer repair.
Uh, wait a minute, that box is right on top of the water and sewer line.
I haven't seen anything on it, um, as far as prints or anything like that.
It's right, it's right.
I mean, I caught it in the agenda, but I didn't, didn't realize it was something-
It doesn't go to the planning board?
No, it doesn't go to the planning board. It's, it's a request to put a, a commercial sign in the town right of way. Uh, I would normally handle this, but the board has asked me not to do that, to bring it to you. I can make my recommendation right now, just with the, um-
I was gonna ask too about that historical commission, cause that's a historical zone there as well, so.
So my recommendation would be no.
Yeah, it's right over the water sewer line. 12-inch water line and 12-inch-
I'm trying to see where is it?
Right at that first-
That first one?
Right at the first entrance there where, uh-
Oh, sign?
Where Duncan Donuts interest is on Middle Street.
Yes.
So it's on Middle Street.
Oh, Middle Street.
It looks right out here.
Okay.
Yeah, where Duncan Donuts pulling off of Middle Street. It'd be right in here, wanna take a look at it?
No, I, I know what you're talking about. There's a little close for a manhole.
You know, it's on, it's on her lawn up there, but it's, yeah, the manhole's right on a corner there, on the curb.
Would it be a seduction of YouTube for-
Uh, it looks like it's set back, but it's not set back far, far enough. If, if they were to put it on town property, up by the sidewalk maybe, you know, it wouldn't be over the water and sewer line.
I think, I think you're opening up a door.
Yeah.
I think, I think that you've got one of the prettiest streets in all of England right there. Uh, you could easily lose that, uh-
And wouldn't, wouldn't the historical society have to chime in on that?
Probably everybody's gotta look at it first, yeah.
In the planning board and, you know, before you put up a sign anywhere?
Did Duncan Donuts get approval to put that sign there?
Thank you.
They did, okay.
Gosh.
I was looking at where their sign is and we're arguing against the vacuum care one, so.
Yeah, and, and again, the only thing I would comment on, just like Paul's water and sewer infrastructure.
Yeah.
Outside of that, I guess the rest is up to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Or line of sight.
So do we have to entertain a motion for that vacuum care or what do you wanna do? Have it? What do you want?
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll make a motion that would deny the request to place the, uh, vacuum care sign in town right of way.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
I'm sure, do you wanna do an update on Russell School, if anything with the contractors?
I'm sure, do you wanna do an update on Russell School, if anything with the contractors?
Oh, yeah, they, well, we saw the emails, they got right up there and cleaned things up. I think weather held them up a little bit, otherwise they'd be, they would've left town by now. I think they're forming a second foundation, I didn't get out there today either, today or tomorrow, but the sideboards were supposed to be removed by the end of the week, gone. So, I also showed up on the property and talking about fixing up a little bit of blacktop over there, which was, was damaged, but to begin with, and they're gonna loan and seed the, the grass and, um, so that's where we're at, before they go. Um, oh, and a, and a pile of loam that was left at the back of the existing town block's gonna be removed also. I think it hasn't been already, I didn't get out there today.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Not yet. Not yet, thank you, yes.
That's for us.
That's for us, thanks, David.
Emergency repairs for the sewer.
Oh.
Marlo, why don't you walk us through this?
Okay, so.
I didn't see that on the agenda, yeah.
Put it in the town administrator's report, this is a developing issue.
It's an emergency. Developing issue.
Yeah, it's, well, it is developed, but. So, just to back the bus up a little bit, we went to a stakeholders' meeting early last week or the week before. The sidewalk project, MassDOT sidewalk project, starting at South Maple, headed for the Amherst line, was supposed to commence this week. Um, so, I started with assessing our sewers going forward for two thousand twenty-two or twenty-three with a larger project. So, we were able to, uh, tee, clean in camera two thousand feet of AC main of, of three or four different sizes. I take that back, eighteen hired up in that area and two, about two hundred and forty feet in the E Street intersection. Uh, the video, I got the video that afternoon, they were nice enough to cut it onto a thumb drive for me, and it was pretty scary when I watched it. Movies at home that night. The, the, all the pipe work is paper thin, there's gasket showing through it. Uh, it was installed in nineteen sixty-four, it's got a fifty-year lights, life cycle. So, it, it was, before I asked the recommendation from the, the filming company, I, the videotaping company, I actually came to the conclusion that it looked pretty good to line, but it don't look good, it's looking, looking like the pipes can, can start collapsing in, in the near future. I mean, tomorrow, six months from, I don't know.
The twelve-inch good field.
Yeah, I mean, there's gasket showing on the inside of the pipe that are supposed to be on the outside of the pipe to, to, to joint the pipe together, so. So, that, came back with a recommendation that, yes, you can line these, but you, uh, it came back as ASAP in the report. Um, so I immediately, I, I contacted David and said that we, we really should line these in an emergency, um, because they are starting a sidewalk project, they're gonna have heavy equipment up there, heavy vibratory equipment. And the last thing we want is a collapse out there in that intersection, you know, like on graduation weekend or something, so. I can't, I, I came tonight because I, I highly recommend that, uh, an emergency basis for emergency procurement also, that we go ahead and get this two thousand feet lined as soon as we can. I did, I did get out ahead of it, I've got two quotes already. I was also gonna request for the emergency procurement that we, that we can apply for a waiver for that. Uh, but they're gonna want at least three quotes, so I got out ahead of that, I'm waiting for the third one. I did put in my email, I'm estimating, uh, just about seventy-six thousand dollars for that work. We should have a retainage in there, I'm requesting eighty-five thousand, um, just in case we come across something else along the way.
I don't know if any of you remember McDonald's came in, but that's what you're looking at right now.
Yeah.
And we also are down that one truck too, so if there was an emergency?
Yeah, well, we have the vector.
You have the vector.
But we, it would be calling, calling everyone at that point, if we, I mean, that, that section of the main takes the hotels, the mall, I mean, it takes everything off that into town, I mean, you're talking.
Yeah, since the McDonald's failure, you know, we pumped it with our truck and contractor truck, but, you know, there's been three more hotels built down there.
There's a lot of stress.
There's a lot more, there's a lot more water coming through that line than there used to be.
Yeah, I actually had a much higher number that I ran up, but I looked up some of John's old numbers on, on previous projects, and I ran with those numbers, but believe it or not, something's gone down in price a little bit. Because there's more companies doing it now, I'm guessing, but.
And, and they estimated the, originally, when we sleeve lined back, I don't know how many years ago, that, uh, station two was done, but it was roughly a fifty-year warranty, and it's pretty much a hundred-year warranty right now on, on the lining, so.
They, they were, they were rating it up to fifty years, now they're saying fifty to a hundred, and they're in fifty now, so.
And what's your estimated cost if there was a collapse and we had to dig up that intersection?
Conservatively, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, conservatively, if you gotta do manholes through your, that doesn't include all the inconvenience of rerouting traffic and, um.
It's basically a lane on Route Nine, closing South Maple, Maple Street completely, uh, the manhole's right in the middle of the intersection.
For extended time.
It's a major, major failure there.
And, and work, if, if we do the work, the work would be done at night, so we don't have to, we don't have to worry about bypass pumping, lower flows. That, that price is given, that, that, we're gonna have a couple of the sewer, our own sewer workers helping out, controlling the pump station, uh, hauling septic, we're gonna rent a couple, a couple of trucks. Uh, of what you were saying, that one truck could be used, but it can't be used. But, uh, they're saying, uh, I'm, I'm being told two to three nights at this point to get it all done. And that night would probably be best.
So, we're gonna do deals of prayers right now, aren't we?
Well, I've been praying since last Thursday night, I didn't sleep.
I should've let him handle for you.
And, and look, look, I'm not an eardr, uh, person, but it was pretty ugly. I, I was amazed at how circular the pipe, the pipes still look for the condition they're in. In fact, a couple of, both companies had already said to me that it's pretty amazing they're still bound like they are, so.
I certainly would advise the DPW and this select board, sewer commissioners, you think that's the oldest line, these lines started here, these are older. So, when you got rubbers showing the inside of those pipes, that's the same thing happened in Larnell, you spent quarter of a million dollars, you could've spent thirty thousand dollars to line it. We lined pipes before, and it's done at midnight, but you have a break, you're gonna get, this is what we all had set up. To bypass, you put a line above, dump it to manhole, bypass the whole system, and that's expensive. And again, asbestos pipe can't be crushed no more, it has to be abated and taken off, mega bucks. So, if he says it's gonna be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that is a very conservative figure. That thing would be closer to one million dollars. And, if that's bad, guess what this older pipe is? So, I would advise you guys, I've been after you for a few years now. Recamera, we did the whole thing from Amherst all the way down. You can compare those two films, he's got those, and you see how they deteriorated, that tells you the rest of the system's in trouble.
We're, we're in the, we're in the process.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of
Declare an emergency.
The DPW director to declare an emergency and move forward with the necessary repairs for the sectional infrastructure, just a new discussion.
Security procurement.
All of the favor?
Aye.
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 Of state.
Don't you, the man chairman, don't you think? The DPW can't declare emergency, see, the sewer commissioners, and you as acting sewer commissioner has got to declare that emergency.
We just, that's what I just did.
Well, I thought I heard you said that, DPW.
Well, we did, we accepted the recommendation and declared.
Do we need a vote for emergency procurement?
No, the waiver, I'm just making sure we got a vote.
We're all federation in the basket.
So, Marlo, I'll try to contact the Department of Revenue and DPW.
Yeah, we gotta talk, I'll be funded.
Alright, David, anything else on your road show?
Which David?
You. You.
No, I'm good.
Did you wanna share something with us?
That was on the board.
Throw one more.
Alright, just, we're good? Alright, so, next week is town meeting, May?
What about conduct?
Oh, conduct, yes, yes.
That, Sue, I didn't know if we were gonna talk about HCG, if that was on tonight's agenda or if none of these.
Oh, um, I was gonna do that after town meeting, but we can talk about it. Why don't we do it after town meeting, because it's something that we've seen and we don't wanna be, run afoul of open meeting. You're talking about the letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Conduct. Everybody have a chance to review that, um, any discussion on this?
Well, did David want an opportunity?
Yeah, so, uh, David added this to the agenda, and, uh, I, I agree that putting something in right is an idea. I just thought that the previously passed conduct went a little bit far in not only, um, giving up the select board authority, uh, but also making it more difficult to carry out our oversight abilities and kinda make our jobs harder. Uh, also, there was some freedom of speech, political speech issues I saw with not being able to talk to residents of Hadley as far as what our feelings were on issues outside of a select board meeting or tell people how we felt, which would make campaigning or election almost impossible, based on, uh, the, the wording that was in that document. So, what I did was I made some changes to the document that you have there, and, um, there's two versions. One is the changed document, and then there's another one with, uh, my notes and the track changes, so you can see what was deleted and what wasn't.
Just what you're saying, David, I couldn't find, and thank you for doing that, because it's a lot easier to follow, where, so you said I took this out.
Right.
But the one about not, um, I, I remember that there was language, and I'm, sorry, I should've gone back to the original, but the, there was language in there that discouraged people from communicating an uninformed opinion. You know, like to say, oh, I'm against this, or I'm for that, when we haven't even had a chance to talk about it yet. But I couldn't, I couldn't see what was deleted in your.
Yeah, I left, so, I left the part about, uh, you know, select board members should be fully informed, somewhere that's mentioned in there, and I, I did leave that in there.
Right.
Uh, what I took out was the fact that, let me see here, find the right version. You took out, give the town administrator full responsibility for discharging his or her decisions and solutions.
Right, but that's, that's different from what we're talking about.
That, that's not the section, it's not, not make statements. Duties, obligations, and responsibility of board members, I believe, um.
I'd like a little bit more time to take a look at this anyway, so maybe after town meeting, we can leave this on the agenda.
What, what I left in was be
Discuss it a little bit more.
Was be well informed, you know, about the duties and the issues.
Yep.
Let's see.
Remember, the HCG represents the entire community at all times.
All that I left in there, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
The part that I took out, which doesn't seem to be showing you the track changes, was the part that we couldn't. It's further down.
Yeah, that's why I didn't remember.
Yeah. Recu-
Oh, I see, not, not make statements, yeah.
Right, right, right. We're outside of a select board meeting, where we couldn't talk to, uh, you know, a resident of Hadley and tell them how, how we felt on an issue.
Okay, can, and so can I click, because I think, like, I, I get where you're going with a lot of these, and again, I, I had just separately kinda given you the background and on how we came to it.
Yep.
On that one in particular, I think the concern, and it's a question of whether it stays in here, or maybe it's, it, maybe some of these things can be reworded as opposed to deleted too. I think the concern is that, um, for the sake of argument, um, uh, Marlo has the water and sewer rates on, and somebody stops me on the street, and I say, I'll tell you right now, there's no way I'm ever voting for a water and sewer rate increase. I think the concern was that kind of thing could be, I'm just picking that one up, I'm sure there are more, that.
Hey, that's me too.
That, that could be.
I was gonna say, it sounds like John.
So, what's wrong with that? No, I, I, I'm not dead against not raising the rates, because you're still starting.
Because you wanted to raise the rates.
I did, I did, but not fifteen percent, one percent.
I'm just coming up with a fictional example of something that might.
I'll buy the bull to use some popcorn, and we'll sit down and watch the movie of what I said, okay?
I, I think the concern was making sure that before people spoke with conviction and authority, that we were encouraging people to make sure that they, so, and so maybe to your point, David, it, it came across maybe like an edict, like thou shalt not.
Right.
Which, of course, we're all human beings, we have a right to express our opinion.
Under Mass General law, the board has certain obligations on the state level to.
But maybe it's something along the lines of, you know, all members of the board are encouraged to be fully informed prior to, you know, that kinda thing? And you're, and I think maybe you're saying we get to that in another bullet.
Yeah. Well, there's be well informed concerning the duties of a select board member, and then, um, yeah, I, I get what you're saying, I just, I just felt the wording was a little strong and kind of restricting our ability to communicate with voters.
Right, yeah, and that's not the intent.
I mean, if we supported to say the library, we couldn't, based on that original language, we couldn't say that outside of a select board meeting.
But that's not, that's not the intent, we certainly have a right to.
Right.
It, it's just making, making sure it's informed, as opposed to, you know, showing from the hip and not knowing what you're talking about, and then we all have that.
So, do we wanna put this off?
I'd still like to take a little bit more time after town meeting or something, and have, have a little more time in a meeting to discuss it.
Sure, but I'm certainly open-minded to cleaning it up, I, I agree, I think there's some things, when I, you know, I, I know what it meant, and then I read your comment, and I'm like, what? And then I'm like, oh, that's kinda what it says, you know, so.
Anything can always change, as, changes always happen.
A lot of this stuff is already in the personnel book, in the personnel handbook, so, in the yellow book there.
Yeah, well, and again, this was a recommendation that came down from the, the state on best practices, so.
That's where it came from, which one? Okay, so we'll table it for the discussion. Because we all aren't going anywhere for a year, so we're here.
We're here.
Okay. Alright, anything else on your town report, David, that you wanted to mention tonight?
The audit is substantially complete, so we'll be scheduling a, uh, a verbal report from the auditors on the FY seventeen budget and financial condition. Uh, we've already dealt with the flat grant, we've already dealt with the emergency repairs. So, Turco Park, we, we all worded that to a mast of the landscaping, so the contracts have been sent out. Town meeting is coming right up, folks. There's public forum tomorrow at, uh, seven o'clock, Hopkins Academy. And, uh, town meeting itself is May third at seven o'clock at Hopkins Academy. But don't forget the Mother's Club Recycling Day, April twenty-eighth, good, good event.
This Saturday, eight till one o'clock, Mother's Club Recycling Day at Hadley Elementary School.
Nine to one, I mean, nine to noon.
Nine to noon now, they changed the time?
That, uh, this is the flyer that came out.
It was eight to one.
Yeah.
What's that? What is that? It's the Hadley Mother's Club?
No, it's the Hadley Band Boosters.
Band boosters, bottle drive.
No, that's the bottle drive, okay, that's along, that's
That's where they're done.
In conjunction with the Mother's Club Recycle Day.
Got it.
So, recycle day means anything you wanna?
And the boys get to there.
They take anything or not?
Get a hold of the Mother's Club.
Okay.
It's online, and, yeah, so what is that, the, uh, boosters?
Yeah, so.
Bottle.
Bottle drive is nine to noon, okay.
Yeah, and the drop, that's at Hadley Elementary School.
And that's in Hadley Elementary School also.
Yeah.
So, other than that, I've been up to town meeting all the time at this point, um.
I read that in the paper.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, you're going now, see you, bye.
Ten seconds, quick update on mission, mission electrical upgrade. Um, I just got information on the way here tonight, I was on the phone with Mike.
Oh, okay.
We're looking good on, the, the missions should be completed and installed by early next week. Uh, that part of the work, there's still some electrical that needs to be done, but that project looks to be ahead of target, so.
Good.
We should be done with the compact grant part of it within the next week, and, um, so you have all your invoices to go ahead and file with the paper.
Just a reminder that we have Gabriel Owens to thank for writing the part of that grant, so, save, save people fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Gabriel, thank you.
Uh, yeah, actually, the first, uh, upgrade will probably be complete next week also.
Yeah.
Did Marlo talk to the contractor that wrecked those parking lots over there in the upper and the lower in Allegiant, to fix those? Did anybody talk to that contractor?
Christian.
This, is that the same contractor that's working here now? That stage there?
Yes.
Did anybody talk to him about?
No.
Is anybody going to?
What are you talking about, Sean?
To repair the parking lot that he wrecked.
The upper parking lot, Tom Lot up in Allegiant.
Well, I think we need to settle a couple of things in court on that one first.
Christian.
I just had a quick update on the senior center. They got their budget numbers in, and they're on track right now, they're less than two percent over the cost estimate, so that's really good. There's two planning board meetings coming up for the senior center, one on May fifteenth and one on June ninth, and they're asking if they can maybe hold those meetings at Hopkins instead of over at the senior center, or, yeah, the senior center. So, I don't know how that request goes through.
It would have to be the planning board that addresses us on that if they want to move their venue.
Okay.
And we need to reserve for that to Hopkins Academy.
And they need to reserve.
Because they're just worried that because of the importance of those meetings, there could be too many people showing up, and it could be, could be canceled because of that, and then delay the project more.
So, we should ask the planning board if you could contact the chair.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them.
You wanna reach out to them, okay.
Who you gonna talk to?
It's the chair who sets the agenda, so, Mr. Max Malsky.
We'll be up to the board, the home board.
Well, we still have to address, contact the chair.
Yeah.
And ask him, and then he can bring it up to his board.
There you go.
Well, the chair sets the agenda, so however the chair wants to set the agenda.
I don't think the board votes on the venue, because we've never done that here, we just make a decision and roll with it.
So, you'll do that?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Christian?
That's it, then I had it, that.
Anything else, everybody else? Any announcements tonight? No, we don't need to go into executive session this evening?
Oh, we don't?
We don't?
I don't have to prepare it.
If nobody has any other announcements, I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry, I can't.
All in favor? Good night, everybody, thank you.